That the batteries start going on that and it becomes expensive for repairs. We'll know when we get there. They said you can order eight, but you're not guaranteed. So we need to look for a different option. And we found these Durango's and the hybrid model is about $4,000 more per vehicle than gas. But I think ultimately with gas savings.
It was Fire Station Two restroom locker remodel. But I see it shows up here as 60,000. It shows up on that list as 60,000. So I was wondering if which pod it's coming out or.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Commissioner Logan. So the $60,000 and the chief might be able to speak more of this, but it's for the design and architectural for the remodel. And so they want to move forward with that. And then the actual construction costs we're hoping to bring into the intercap loan.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? That conclude your presentation for this?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. One more thing. There also is included into our packet, the parks improvement capital fund. And so some of the park use fees that we collect go into this fund. Sometimes there's restricted donations for parks and they go into this fund to fund specific restricted items. But they are planning some, some minor projects, Sixth Ward Garden Park. Those are restricted. That's the baseball blockage, I believe. And then. Continue to fund the, wrap up the funding needs for the fire tower. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention as well. And if the commission has any other questions regarding general capital, I'm happy to answer them. Or if you're, you're fine with the prioritized list, I think we can move forward in presenting those in the preliminary budget document in June.
Comments? I'm comfortable with the list as it's currently prioritized. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item B, which is ARPA general fund savings. Are we all set online now? Yes. Oh, yes, thank you. Is there any public comment first on general capital FY '24 budget? Any online?
Mayor Brotem, I have no comment online. However, an update on the audio. We should be good now. It seems like it was a hardware issue on the back end, but we should be okay.
Great, thank you. And thank you everyone online for your patience as we're learning this new system. Okay, we have Ms. Opitz to present for item B, ARPA general fund savings. Just really briefly, Ms. Opitz is going to provide us an overview of where we, where we've been and some of the items that we're going to discuss today. And then Manager Burton will provide a brief update on our contingency. And then we'll jump into commission discussion and we can structure our conversation a little bit more from there. Okay, Ms. Opitz.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Commissioners. So as you stated, we're going to start first with a wrap up of our total federal funding allocations to date. So just for clarification, that includes the CARES funding that came in 2020 and the ARPA funding that came later. So that total amount that was, came to the city from the, that was distributed from the US Treasury was around $13 million. You can see those two numbers split out, 4.7 for CARES Act and 8.4 for ARPA. Both of those sets of funds, and I want to make this extra clear because there is some confusion, I think, in the community in which we call these ARPA funds or CARES funds. These are general fund savings that were created by the distribution of the funds to the city. So the city claimed those funds as revenue loss or services rendered, government services rendered, which then created savings in the general fund. Next slide. So those combined general fund savings from those two federal allocations. Commissioner Dean had requested that I put those into some, some kind of a more consolidated look. You did receive a full spreadsheet on, at the April 5th meeting that included all the itemized bits and pieces of where these fundings, these funding sources went. As you can see, we've, we've tried to bring those into consolidation. So we have a $1.6 million contingency that makes up roughly 13% of those allocations. The Affordable Housing Trust received 1.685 in the care, through the CARES funding, which is about 14% of the total pot. The city finance system upgrade, so that's the new enterprise resource and planning software, was a $2 million allocation split between CARES and ARPA at 16%. The local business support, so that was a grant and loan support for MBACK, Montana Business Assistance Connection that was provided through CARES for local business recovery during COVID-19. We also have funding that was supported or that supported nonprofits, both again through ARPA and CARES to the tune of $2.3 million, which is roughly 19% of the total pot. Facility improvements at the city. So this would include hard facilities like the city county building, law justice center build out, but also the water treatment plant improvements that were allocated at the beginning of the ARPA allocations. That's $21 million or excuse me, 21%, $2.6 million. We have public safety. That's, I think that's correct. Yeah, public safety allocations at 8% or $915,000. Parks and Rec projects at $455,000, 4%. Street and roadway projects, 2%, $265,000. And some community development planning that went to the redevelopment agency study in 2020 for 1% at $100,000. So that's a lot of numbers, but hopefully gives a better picture of where the funding has gone in the last couple of years. Excellent. So to further break this down, a big chunk of that money went to nonprofits. And I again tried to consolidate that into more easily digestible categories. Affordable housing, public safety, historic preservation, conservation, animal services, legal services, civic organizations, youth enrichment programs, arts and letters, and human services. We can go through all of those numbers too, but if you feel comfortable with where those are at. It just provides again a better look at the cross section of the community that was impacted by those specific nonprofit dollars that have been allocated to date.
Sure, looks like we have a question. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Ms. Opitz. Just a question on the previous slide. Does this include the funding that was given to HACF to further distribute or?
Correct.
So all the breakdowns include all the pass through or whatever we're calling it?
Correct. So the general fund savings, that would include the three substantial grants that we have provided in the last few months to our redeemers, the tri-county fire and food share. But also the funding, there was $402,000 that was provided from the CARES general fund savings for nonprofit recovery. That includes that number as well as funding that has come since then. Next slide. So now to switch gears, we're focusing now just on the existing general fund savings. And that was created through the advent of ARPA. Again, general fund savings that are being distributed. This is where we're at to date. So that original distribution from the US Treasury was $8.4 million. We've allocated $1.8 million to the 10-mile water treatment facility upgrades. We've allocated to several internal projects. The Civic Center HVAC system, the CAD RMS system, which is a record management system for our public safety. The Mount Helena radio building, which was a project that we split with the county after that building was hit by lightning last year. Law and Justice Center second floor remodel, and then again, the finance ERP system. That all totaled $1.8 million. The commission has put aside a contingency, which the, which the city manager will speak to here in a minute. At 1.6, we've allocated internal commission recommended projects, including the Grand Street Theater roof replacement, a replacement of a wildland type six fire truck. The Centennial Trail Repair and Paving, Henderson Pedestrian Bridge feasibility and partial design. That was a $464,000 allocation earlier this year. Well, there was an adjustment that was made due to insurance that came in for that wildland truck. So that brought us back up $153,000. And then most recently, as I spoke to before, the commission has granted community aid grants to our Redeemer's Housing Project, the Community Food Resource Center, and the Wildland Risk Assessment Education Program. So that brings our total at this point to $978,900 left for allocation. Do you want to do the pool first or do you want to talk contingency?
Manager Burton?
Mayor Protem Commissioners will speak to the contingency now if you're comfortable.
Excellent.
Mayor Protem Commissioners, you'll all recall that you set aside 1.6 million in general fund savings for potential legal liability. It is our opinion that that is not the case anymore. And I was wrong. I was estimating, as you know, there's a loan set up with the street department. And there was going to be an intercap loan for repayment. And the, I communicated to some of you that the payment was in around $300,000 that's been made. And I was incorrect. It's 164,000. The city attorney's office has put together the resolution for your consideration to eliminate that loan and pay back the street department $164,000. I think it's going to be coming before you in the next couple of weeks. If the commission approves that resolution, then that will leave $1,436,000 that would then be unencumbered. Mayor Protem Commissioners, are there any questions?
Any questions for the manager?
Mayor Protem.
Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. Mr. Burton, so I think the 1.6 million contingency when we had originally discussed the matter, there was a, an idea of part of that to be used for inflationary concerns. Is that still portion of that we could set aside toward, say, any of these internal projects that we funded? If there are costs that are associated with the supply challenges that we continually have and any other inflationary pressures is, have we considered, you know, how much of that we should set aside?
Mayor Protem, Commissioner Logan, there certainly was that discussion. And we've not made a recommendation or analyzed that to any degree. I think that you heard in, in Director Danielson's report that there was how much?
Thank you. $3.25 million in capital requests just for fiscal '24. That's not the, the long-term capital needs. But that was what was requested for fiscal '24.
So we really are just trying to eliminate the loan, pay back the street fund, unencumbered $1,436,000, and we look for further direction from the commission on what kind of analysis that you would, would like to see.
Yep, Commissioner.
Thank you. So I guess I would be interested in, you know, keeping that money set aside to some degree for future considerations on some of the unaddressed needs and potential financial need for any inflationary challenges that some of these projects might have. How much? I'm open to discussion on that, but something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Would you like to move on to the pool then or wait?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Manager Burton. So the next, the next impact to the balance currently for allocation was, came from the May 8th, yes, May 8th, city commission meeting. There was general consensus to provide status quo services for the pool this year. There was a breakdown of costs in term of, in terms of how that would work. So in order to cover costs associated with overages from last year, in order to keep the pool fully staffed, where, in a deficit of $43,000, and then to onboard and train staff as well as have some startup operational costs covered for this coming season, that would be an additional $80,000. And then once again, we would need that additional $80,000 at the end of this fiscal year to get ready for the season. So that, that total deficit would be $203,000 that the commission gave consensus to city staff to move forward with a resolution. That is still pending a vote. However, should that vote go through, the, the balance for allocation would be 775,900. So for the purposes of today, that is the balance that we're working with. Notwithstanding the $1.4 million that Commissioner, Manager Burton just spoke about, that could be, could become available later. I want to remind the commission of some pending items that are available to continue to discuss. There was an internal request for a study at scope of work cost estimates and schematic design for facility upgrades to the memorial park ice rink warming house at $15,000. I left this, the law and justice center information on this slide just because we have spoken about it before as an internal request. You will have noted in the last presentation by Director Danielson that that has now been moved into our regular capital for FY '24. So that is no longer a pending item for your consideration. Next slide, please. As you'll recall, the city commission went through a process over the course of many months, soliciting applications, scoring, elevating different projects that had come from the nonprofit community in Helena. There were 43 projects that came through the letter of intent to apply process from 41 organizations. The city commission elevated seven to a full application. And to date, we have funded $1.973 million to three projects. The our Redeemer's Housing Project brought by Rock Mountain Development Council, the wildfire risk and assessment education program from tri-county fire safe working group, and the community food resource center from food share. There are four and now three. I will clarify that in one moment. Pending projects, we found out last night through email from President Cech that Carroll College has decided to withdraw their application for their funding for the Wells Warren Nelson Stadium enhancements. So that would leave the three pending projects as the sustainability, sustainability study for the Helena Regional Sports Association, the mobile hygiene and meal prep units that was, application that was brought by United Way of Lewis and Clark County, and a client services building slash emergency shelter from family promise. Emergency Shelter from Family Promise. Next slide. So now we'll move into the proposals that you, as Commissioners, have provided. What we'll do is we'll walk through, Mayor Pro Tem, if you prefer, we'll walk through the list, and then if the Commissioners have comments that they would like to make, we'll go through each one and then open that up for discussion.
I think that sounds great. Thank you.
Okay. So Commissioner Dean provided a bank of city projects as well as community-based projects. I did break those out for each Commissioner in that way. A proposal for the Comprehensive Recreation Plan to include Memorial and Centennial Parks, an influx of cash to the K's Kids program, an Exploration Works proposal. I will note that their request was for $652,813 originally through the LOI process, a contribution to the solar loan revolving fund, and then an additional solar project on city property. The community projects that Commissioner Dean has proposed include the Family Promise Client Services Building. Again, that original request was for $750,000. A Good Samaritan Warming Shelter and Adult Day Program, a contribution, and this was another project that came through the letter of intent to apply process from the Last Chance Powwow. That LOI was for $2,000. And then, again, the Carroll College Stadium Project. Unfortunately, we found out about that withdrawal before this presentation was put together, or after the presentation was put together, so it is still present throughout. Commissioner Dean, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think, I mean, I might just put in my two cents, and then we'll go into the next slide. Does that work?
That's good.
Okay, great. So what I think I might do is just start with some of the city projects. I think we'll start with the Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan. This is something that was born out of the initial conversations about the ice rink. Because we have had a huge demand for the ice rink, we were not able to have the warming hut open because of its dilapidated state, and that started a conversation about, really, the overuse of the parks and facilities that we do have. I think I see, I believe, there he is. Director Smith is in the back. For our field facilities, we're essentially 50% over capacity for what we have right now. We're not able to keep up with the demand in any way, shape, or form. I think it's for a community that so much of our identity is wrapped up in access to open lands, parks, and recreation. I think this is something that we really need to be prioritizing, is what does this next big step for parks, recreation, and open lands look like? It's been nearly 17 years since we've actually engaged in this type of master planning. I was in middle school the last time that we engaged in this process. I'm 31 now, and I, my peers are having little kids, and it becomes evident when you start running out of space, when there's more and more tournaments and YMCA soccer games and pickleball leagues that we can't meet the demand. And we want our community to be healthy and happy and have not only physical wellness, but mental wellness as well. The Parks Department indicated that this $150,000 would be sufficient to really pursue this master planning process and then be able to find the funding sources that we need to be able to initiate the type of improvements that we need to meet the demand that the community is asking for. It also allows us to go for a lot of grants that we otherwise wouldn't be able to without that master plan. I'm happy to answer more questions, and I know Director Smith has a lot of information about the huge demand that we are seeing, but for the sake of time, I will move on. K's Kids is the second piece. I know many people have lots of personal experiences with K's Kids. It's a really critical piece to addressing summer child program and care needs for the, all the years, couple decades that it has been around. If we can provide this $50,000 investment over a three-year period, they're going to be able to reach their maximum capacity of almost 2,900 child days of use and additional scholarships for students whose families cannot afford to participate in some of the field trips. I think this is a no-brainer when we know that childcare is a big issue right now and a pretty huge return on investment for our community. Second? Oh, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just a question on K's Kids. Perhaps we did receive a request from them at some point and a breakdown? Did we receive a request from them?
We did.
Okay, and it was for $50,000 for those specific items?
Yes.
Do we have any idea which packet that's in? Because I'd be interested to...
Yes, it was in the, it was in the December 9th packet.
Okay. Possibly why I have...
And it was actually on page, you want to have it right here. It was on page 216 of the December 9th packet.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Your recall is very impressive.
I'm organized for a reason. All right, moving on. Exploration Works, as Amanda noted, this is significantly less than what Exploration Works was asking for. Essentially, this is a project to close in their outdoor patio space on the second floor. It's not able to be used and is beginning to fail due to weather and the rest. I don't think most, a lot of people know that the city is part owner of this building. It's a really critical piece of access to science and arts and exploration, as in the name, for kids. It's a really cool project that they have envisioned to go into this space, and I think that this is a small investment for us to help actually keep the building up and help kick off this project. Next is the Solar Loan Revolving Fund Contribution. I know we're going to get to the other piece of this in the budget. We normally have $70,000 budgeted for the solar loan program. We haven't figured out where or if that's coming from. This would be in addition to that. There's a huge demand for this program. I think we were told that last week there's 12 applications that have yet to be funded. This is a program that allows homeowners from all parts of the economic spectrum to be able to access a zero-interest solar array for their home. I think it's something that helps address a lot of issues, one of which is helping to achieve our city renewable energy goals. The next is the solar project on city property. I'm very open to increasing the dollar amount on this, but I was trying to get to a place where we'd be balanced. And it, I think Commissioner Logan will probably get to this, but there is other opportunity for some cost savings, so 250 or 280 might do it and might be, would be able to complete, it sounds like, two projects, but I'll let him speak to that when we get to that piece. Moving on to the community projects. The Family Promise Client Services and Emergency Shelter Program, this is about a little less than half of what was requested. Family Promise is a really critical entity within the community. When they sent in their report, and it demonstrated the dozens, over two dozen families a year, that they're able to transition into more permanent housing. I know just for a lot of folks who, right now, they work with their churches, our church does a lot, and it's a whole, old week of preparations to get ready to take in the families, and Family Promise does an excellent job in helping move them into more permanent, safer housing. I think if we can help provide an emergency shelter facility for them, that is going to address a huge need that we currently have that is not being addressed, and then also free up rooms and space in God's love for those who do not have children with them. And then, the last few, Good Samaritan Warming Shelter Adult Day Program. The $60,000 came from the project lead position that was within that request. I think that it would be really great if we could get that piece. My concern is the ongoing costs if we don't know how to address them, but at least that position, I hope, could get it going so that we could find some sustainable funding sources. I think Good Samaritan obviously has a very solid record of getting results, and hopefully this will be a way for us to help promote that and expand the program. And then finally, the Last Chance Powwow Demonstration Day. I was a little disappointed we didn't, this didn't get funded the last time because it isn't only a $2,000 request. If you haven't been to the Last Chance Powwow, I would really encourage you to go. It's, I mean, all Powwows are fun, but I think that this Last Chance Powwow is very special, and if we can help expand their ability to bring more people into attending the Powwow, I think that would be significant. And I don't think $2,000 is too much to ask from this pot for a community event that's important. So with that, that is, those are my requests. And if there aren't questions, I guess we can move on to the next.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Next, we have Commissioner Shertliff's list of proposals. So first, there was a request for an addition to the sidewalk loan program. This is an existing program similar to the solar loan program that Commissioner Dean just spoke to. A request for some additional lighting, potentially a solar lighting project at the city dog park. Additionally, a contribution to K's Kids, as well as support for a solar project on city property. The community projects that Commissioner Shertliff identified included the Good Samaritan Warming Shelter and Adult Day Program, the Helena Regional Sports Association Recreation Center Sustainability Study. Again, that additional, that initial request was for $64,000. Support for the Last Chance Powwow Demonstration Day. This was somewhat unspecified, but Commissioner Shertliff can speak to it. I think later on in, there are other proposals. There is a specific request from the BID to have a public bathroom downtown. Commissioner Shertliff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this was to support either that program or an incentive program for business owners to provide public restroom access. And then, the last proposal was for the Our Redeemers Housing Project Additional Funding. You would have noted in the earlier part of the presentation that we have funded that to 1.5 million. The initial request was for 2.4. Commissioner Shertliff can add any comments that he might like.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Opitz. I appreciate it a lot. About a month ago, we heard from some folks in the ADA community that avoid certain streets or sidewalks due to the need for maintenance of those sidewalks. And I had proposed $100,000 in additional funding for the sidewalk loan program. Whether it's in that program or in maintenance of our sidewalks, I think we need to take a good, hard look if we want to be a connected, inclusive, and safe community. What they said in that meeting, these folks said in that meeting, really struck a chord with me. Regarding the dog park, it's really well-used. It's something that, it's a safety issue, because when, during the summer, we take our dogs down after sunset, because finally the temps drop and they can actually go play, but there's been, you know, being right near the railroad, being right near nature park. In terms of amount, I know that Padver Paz or had asked for $5,000. They weren't sure about how much, but that's kind of on the lower end of the spectrum in terms of my priorities. K's Kids, for sure, that's a wonderful program that could get a lot of use out of $50,000. And I'm, some of these will say unspecified, and that's because I'm interested in a discussion. You know, not a negotiation, but a discussion here, how we can kind of come to a consensus on amount. I think in terms of our sustainability goals and as well as saving taxpayers' money, I think looking at solar projects on city property is well worth the funding and the discussion. The Good Samaritan Warming Shelter and Adult Day Program, Good Samaritan does a great job for folks that are needing a second or third chance. And I think warrants discussion as well. The Helena Regional Sports Association Recreation Center Sustainability Study. There are other communities in our state looking at sports facilities. I think this is great for our kids. I think it's great for our community, kids of all ages, I should say. It could be transformational for our community. I think it warrants a discussion as well. I agree with Mayor Pro Tem, Dean regarding the Last Chance Powwow Demonstration Day. $2,000 isn't easy. I've attended that once or twice. I think it's a wonderful event. I think that's an easy one for me. The public bathroom in downtown Helena, I've spoken to folks, businesses, and associations for downtown. I've been downtown for events. I think that warrants some discussion, whether it's looking at the proposal that Commissioner Reed brought to the table, or looking at alternatives, you know, or if it's something that we include in our budget, you know, looking at what's the maintenance, installation, maintenance, upkeep? Is it, I just, I think that's a, I think that's definitely, there's a need there for sure, especially with all the events in the heart of Helena. And then, our redeemers, we know that housing is a very critical need, and I'm proud to say that, you know, 67% of our funding has gone towards affordable housing. I think that's fantastic. And I'd like to, you know, continue having that discussion with that. I'll get off my soapbox and I'll let you continue on. Thank you, Ms. Opitz. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Commissioner Shertliff. Any questions or comments from the other Commissioners? Great, Ms. Opitz.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. Next, we have Commissioner Reed's list of proposals. The city project that she would like to bring is the support for the solar loan, another solar loan project on city property. And then, some community projects, including, we spoke to this just a moment ago, but the Helena Business Improvement District in downtown Helena Incorporated have a public toilet proposal. She can potentially speak more to that. The Good Samaritan Warming Shelter and Adult Day Program, once again. An additional request to provide support for the Our Redeemers Housing Project. The Trail Rider Bike Trailer Request, and then a request to set aside additional funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund earmarked specifically for an emergency shelter project. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Ms. Opitz. With the solar projects on city property, it seems the number 300,000 has been floating around. I'm comfortable with that. I wasn't sure if we had some specificity around that, but if there's two projects for 300,000, that works for me. I appreciate the suggestion of that project. I don't think it was something we'd considered previously, and I'm delighted to see an investment in that. For community projects, the public toilet, there is information, I think it's in the packet. Did it make it in the packet?
It was provided to the Commission separate from the packet.
Okay, yes. So there is a model called the Portland Lou, which is designed to be a downtown public restroom facility. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, a Portland Lou was actually just put in billings within the last month. Yes? Sorry.
I don't know. I didn't see it ordered and on the way.
Ordered and on the way, yes. There's one in Missoula. Yes, I knew there were some in Montana. I have seen them in Portland, so it is specifically designed to be a public restroom. It's a very well-designed piece of infrastructure that would suit our environment, and I think, my understanding is the Porta-Potty that's been in Centennial Park has been well-used and well-utilized, and it makes a difference. I will not go too far on this subject, but I think the need is clear. We have heard comments ranging from concerns about open defecation on our sidewalks and a more important commentary about the lack of dignity when there is nowhere to go. So I think we, it is a problem that is right in front of us, and if we can provide a place for people to go, no matter what their circumstance, I think it is high time we do that. I think it is high time we do that. The Good Samaritan Warming Shelter Adult Day Program, I think that is an awesome opportunity. I think it addresses some of the same issues. We've heard concerns both from business owners who are navigating our unhoused population and from the unhoused population. And I think a place for people to go during the day until God's love opens is a very important missing piece in our safety net right now. I think in addition to that sort of ongoing need, I recall last winter, I think it was in December, when it was negative 40, negative 35, we had no emergency shelter for people to go to. I find that deeply distressing to imagine us being in the same place again this coming winter. I think this is a way to solve that problem, and I feel like I'm not going too far to suggest that we might need emergency cooling shelters in the not-too-distant future. And knowing that our city has a safe place for people to go when needed is critical. I think, I considered the full request. I appreciate Mayor Protem Dean's comments about the sustainability piece, but I think an initial one-year investment to get this up, running, established, and ready to operationalize is going to be vital. And then finding ways to sustain all of those pieces is easier once we know how it works, what we really need, et cetera. So I'm very supportive of that. For our Redeemers, it was unspecified because I was trying to gather more information. I think the investment we made is meaningful, and I don't want to suggest otherwise. I think, however, there is a piece of it specifically related to Horseshoe Bend, the road that will go through that property, that is critical to have in place before development can begin. I don't know that there are final numbers. I don't know if there's anyone from the project available right now, but it is my understanding that it would be approximately $250,000 additional to what we have given to allow that piece to be done so that that project can move forward. I would love to see us do that and get them closer to the line, because I think it is, it's something we can do, and if we can, that would be great. The Trail Rider is a little bit of an outlier, and I don't have a ton of information. I had heard from community members that that was something that would be a great one-time sort of injection to get that up and running, that there is a great demand for it. I don't have a lot of information about the cost, so I put it out there for consideration without a ton of information. And lastly, the funding to be earmarked. The Family Promise proposal to me has, well, for lack of a better word, promise, but I didn't feel that it was sufficiently detailed as we received it to fund yet. So I would like to see us put some money aside that could eventually go to that project and that we know will go towards emergency shelter. But I would like to know more before we put funding aside to know if the amount is going to be meaningful or not. The last I heard, there was not a property identified. There were a lot of large questions that I would personally like to hear a bit more about before committing to that specific project. Just a last couple of comments. I'm open to discussions about K's Kids. I think it's a valuable part of our city services. I would, what I would really like is to see K's Kids better resourced all the time. If we have to do ARPA funding to do it, okay, but that, to me, is a budget reflects our priorities moment. And I would prefer that we are budgeting sufficiently for that program all the time and not using emergency funding to do it. And with regard to the Powwow, I've always supported the Powwow. I think that project is better suited through the HACF, you know, grants out to other organizations. If, for whatever reason, that does not work, then I have no concerns about using ARPA funding to support that project. Are we talking about the pool now or later?
You can talk about it now. There's no reason why not.
And I shall, my last comment with regard to the pool, as I think everybody well knows, I'm 7,000% supportive of maintaining operations of the pool. I'd ideally like to see them expanded. It would be my preference not to use ARPA funding for the full amount. I think at our last meeting, there were discussions about the general fund contingency, which is not the same as this general fund contingency. And I would like to see perhaps a half-half, half-ARPA funding and half-general Fund contingency. I believe that if we revisit rates and if we revisit hours, the amount that will be needed will be less. And I would really like to see us move towards that service being better funded so that we do not need such a large subsidy going forward. Thank you.
Can I, Commissioner Reed, do you mean the General Fund Reserve?
I'm possibly getting my terminology wrong. At the last meeting, we had talked about how there were some savings from the general fund, and we were talking about moving those into, I believe the word was contingency reserve. I'm not sure, but it's not this money. Director Danielson, if you could help me out, that'd be great.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean and Mayor Protem. So when I walked the Commission through the reserve policies, there is a policy in place to put additional reserves in a quote contingency account fund that is specified for emergency purposes. There's also remaining cash reserves that could fund the requests that you're indicating. Instead of utilizing emergency reserves, it would, it could come out of just regular general fund reserves would be my recommendation on that.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Opitz.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Next, we have Commissioner Logan with one, a very lengthy list, with one proposal for two 50-kilowatt solar projects on city property. Commissioner Logan.
Well, aren't I the slacker? So coming into this meeting, I was considering this particular proposal as well as taking a look at the three that were, or excuse me, the four that were unfunded and went through the robust application process. And I guess relative to my proposal, I'll speak to the solar project first, and then the remaining community-oriented project thereafter. So the 250,000-kilowatt solar projects, that figure, 300,000, came from, I talked to this former sustainability coordinator, Patrick Judge, and he said a rule of thumb is $3 per kilowatt, I think he said. And so that would be, each system would be 150,000 apiece. And it also was, that figure was sort of validated when I went out to the city shop and spoke with the installer of the new system out there. He was, I asked him his thoughts on that dollar amount, and he said the one that was going out there was roughly 120,000 for that system. And that, but he said of your 150,000 per system figure, that would allow for design potential. So I'm fairly comfortable with 300,000, although there is potential for us to avail ourselves of Northwestern Energies. I think they call it the E-plus renewable program that they have to help fund such projects. And, you know, there's some potential that that figure could ultimately be lower. If we were successful, they have two grant periods throughout the year, one being May 1st, and obviously, we've missed that one. But the next would be November 1st, that we could potentially, if we approved these, then we could potentially apply for that, for that program. And then the other, the community project that was of interest to me of the four that remained was the Family Promise. And I guess I would join my colleagues in saying an unspecified amount. I mean, you know, clearly open for discussion about that. I am sort of the enviable position of, and I knew that over time, others would bring projects to the table, and they indeed have. And as I've heard those discuss tonight, I do have a question on Commissioner Dean, and I think it, I think Mayor Collins also has this in his proposal, but you talked about a comprehensive plan for parks. One of the things that has been discussed in recent, gosh, maybe within the last decade, has been the subject of a regional parks district. And do you see these being compatible or is this a different?
This is not different. What this, and I actually am going to look at Director Smith, too, in case I need some cleanup, batting cleanup up here. This master plan would not only look at essentially, what do we have, what condition is it in, and then what is, what do we see as the future need? Because right now, we are not able to meet the demand. But the other piece of it is, how do we fund it? That would include doing the planning for a parks district. If there were other funding options or more strategic routes for consistent funding, it would also explore those. But this would fund the essentially planning to be able to leverage outside funds and consistent internal funding, which we know that we've needed to look at what overall parks looks like. 80% of recreational facilities in our broader community are within the city of Helena. But top of conversation is always, folks who don't live in the city of Helena are using our facilities, too. So how do we adequately meet the need and keep it funded so that we can, we can maintain a high quality and expand? And I would actually maybe look to Director Smith in case he has anything to add.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Commission. Yes, that is accurate. The comprehensive recreation master plan would set the stage for the discussions of a regional park district. On top of that, open us up to the availability of grant funding for said projects by taking a 20,000-foot look at our entire park system from the top of Mount Helena to Centennial Park. And speaking from the Parks Office, we are in a position of having more and more teams and more and more sports. Lacrosse is coming up and a lack of inventory for fields. So this will identify that, set us up for grant funding, and set the stage for the discussions for a regional parks district.
So Mayor Protem, if I might march on. Thank you, Director Smith. Generally supportive of that, assuming that it, you know, also addresses this need that's been ongoing for a regional parks district. So the next, Commissioner Shertliff commented on the sidewalk loan addition. You know, we heard a lot in our most recent sidewalk summit about the deficit that exists in our sidewalk infrastructure. And I think, you know, the idea, this is something that we all will be discussing or our successors, is how to address that. And, you know, the idea of sidewalks everywhere could be upwards of a $200 million bill. So great need out there. We have some immediate need, as Commissioner Shertliff pointed out, and, you know, I'd be open to discussion on that at whatever amount. So the next, although in the material that Ms. Opitz provided, it was more, it was more just the manufacturer's kind of invoice for the Lou. As far as material that I saw, maybe I missed something in terms of, you know, okay, we buy this. I think there's a lot of questions as to what does that mean? Like, who maintains it? What unintended consequences might there be? Because I know some communities have had, you know, some significant challenges, particularly in law enforcement, for example. And I experienced that not with a Lou, but with a program that was funded, it was emergency funding that came through the state to localities to deal with emergency rental assistance, which amounted to folks being able to get a hotel, for example. Went on a ride-along with one of HPD's officers and went on two calls to two different hotels where individuals had been a part of the MIRA program. And there were some pretty significant challenges, we'll say, to say the least, of such a program. So I guess, you know, prior to committing to that, I guess, I think there's got to be some significant vetting on who's maintaining it. And I'd kind of like to see a staff perspective on challenges that we might be seeing should we commit to this. So those are my thoughts at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Logan. Ms. Opitz.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Commissioner Logan. I believe that both Executive Director John Dendi with the BID is here in the room and could potentially speak to that. From a staff perspective, I think Director Smith could also speak to that. Do you have a preference?
I think maybe let's start with Director Dendi, and then we'll have Director Smith come up after.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Thanks for having me.
And just so everybody knows, he's only a few months on the job, so go easy.
Let's start there. I do not claim to be an expert on public toilets. This is a problem that presented itself to me immediately upon getting the job. So I've done some research, right? We did rent a porta potty with permission from parks. We've located that in Constitution Park. Just a little data, we started out at two rolls of TP a week and then went to four, and this week, we're at six. It's getting heavy use. The need is there. There is concern about crime associated with the public toilet. And from my research so far, this Portland Lou, which there may be a better decision, but so far as I know, it's designed, it's got louvers on the bottom, so you can't peek in and like see somebody, but you can tell if somebody's in there, right? It's got blue lights, so at night, veins are blue. You can't find a vein. It's designed with that intent, but this is not a sales pitch for that particular brand. It's just something I've priced and heard about. Yeah, certainly you have to discuss who's going to maintain it. Absolutely. I have interest on my board in this. I have not gone to my board with an ask, but I know the interest is there. And so that's why I've helped Commissioner Reed price the toilet and present it. Any other thoughts or questions I could address?
Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Commission, and Director Dendi. When I was looking at the proposal for the Portland Lou, it was a little bit unclear to me about what additional costs are required in order to hook up to city infrastructure, and if any cost estimates were provided or looked into for that, because that, it seemed to me that there were a lot of additional costs associated that would be required to install this particular model in one of our parks. Can you speak to that, please?
Yes. Director Danielson, you're absolutely right. That quote did not include installation. The Portland Lou Company has estimated that at $30,000 to $60,000. So I'm going with 60, because we know how things go, which brings, that's what brings it up to a $230,000 situation. As far as ongoing costs, this is a, the one I've priced is a winterized model, supposed to go down to negative 15 or negative 20. That does mean it uses electricity to have a small bit, like a little water heater and some circulation. And from what I looked at, data provided from somewhere way up in B.C., so a cold climate, it was about 800-kilowatt-hours a month in the winter, almost negligible in the summer. So that's like 100 bucks a month for electricity, in the winter only. So, you know, preliminary numbers, but I'm definitely paying attention to numbers, but I'm definitely paying attention to operating costs.
Director Danielson?
Thank you. And one more question, please, Mayor Protem. So the $60,000 is also the infrastructure costs in order to get it connected to city water and sewer?
Yes, that's what was provided to me.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a quick question. Who is doing the maintenance or servicing on the porta potty right now?
We, Little Johns does it once a week, and I check on it daily and replace toilet paper as necessary.
And just a quick follow-up, if you don't mind. Thank you, Director Dendi. And have you found that it has been well-maintained? Have you seen problems there? What are you observing? Thank you.
No serious thanks for your question, Commissioner Reed. No vandalism, nothing terrible thrown down into the hole, right? You know, it's a little bit dirty by the end of the week. If it continues to increase, if use continues to increase, we'll have to get it serviced twice a week, just to keep it from overfilling.
Great. Thank you. And I guess before Director Smith comes up, and you said BID hasn't had a chance to talk about, you know, what this could look like, is there interest in, or do you think there might be interest from the BID in taking on the maintenance costs, if, should we fund the installation?
I'll have to go to the board for that.
Okay.
There's been some discussion of investing capital upfront versus ongoing maintenance, as you might imagine. But this is all informal discussion, and no position has been taken by the board on that.
Great. Thank you. Any, yes, Commissioner Shertliff?
Mayor Protem, thank you very much. Director Dendi, thank you very much for being here today. That was going to be one of my questions, is the potential for cost sharing. Back to the porta potties or the portaloos, what's the cost of maintenance weekly?
I've yet to see an invoice, but they're quite cheap.
Okay.
Hundred bucks a month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is not a big investment.
Sure.
It's a big investment in time, but not to have a porta potty.
Okay.
Cost will, could double if we have to service it more. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Great. Thank you, Director Dendi.
Thanks for having me.
And Director Smith?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Commissioner. Can I just ask a quick question, please?
Please.
What information are you looking for? Because I have done a little bit of research with our department, because we deal with ongoing maintenance of restrooms. So I have some real data?
I think if you could provide that, and maybe our overall experience in managing other public toilets, is there any other information the rest of the Commission would like?
Mayor Protem, I, you know, this is kind of a new subject, I think, for us all. And I don't know whether he has anything to offer, but I'd be interested, from a law enforcement perspective, any challenges that you might foresee for Chief Petty, if possible. Commissioner Logan, I can dabble in an answer, and we may need Chief, but I can just tell you, the usage and vandalism is on the rise, and all of our porta potties to the point that certain vendors are questioning continuing to do business with us. So I don't think that touches on police, because they're in remote locations, and there really aren't any witnesses when these things happen. So, you know, it's increasing across the board in all of our restrooms. People are painting toilets up at the Mount Helena Trailhead. So there are a lot of things going on. One thing I can speak to with the research that I've done with one restroom of this size, the ongoing maintenance is approximately, this is for personnel, supplies as well, and the maintenance costs are approximately $15,000 a year. Break it up, divide that by 12, you're talking $1,250 a month is what it costs for the city at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Smith? Okay. Thank you, Director. Ms. Opitz?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. So the next set of proposals that we have for your consideration is obviously Mayor Collins, who is not with us. I did want to just mention, for the benefit of the public, that this body had made a request at our last commission meeting that no decisions be made, because Mayor Collins is not here today. It's confusing, because we're in the commission chambers, but this is an administrative meeting where consensus direction is given to staff, but not necessarily voting. So I just want to make that clear. But we can read off Mayor Collins' proposals, even though he's not here with us. So he also had support for the comprehensive recreation plan, the K's Kids program, as well as an infusion of funding for Exploration Works. The Carroll College Stadium project, again, has been withdrawn. The sustainability study for the Helena Regional Sports Association, the Family Promise Client Services Building and Emergency Shelter, support for the Last Chance Powwow Demonstration Day, as well as the Good Samaritan Warming Shelter and Adult Day Program. Next slide, please. So this slide is a little out of date, given the conversation that has just transpired. So I'm going to do my best on the fly to compile. But I did want to just note projects that the Commission did have in common. So my understanding now is that Commissioner Logan is also potentially interested in discussing the comprehensive recreation plan. So that would include Commissioner Logan, as well as Commissioner Dean and Mayor Collins. The solar loan project, we had four different Commissioners that provided support for that. The K's Kid program also had three, Dean, Shertliff, and Mayor Collins. Exploration Works had support from Commissioner Dean, Commissioner Shertliff, and Mayor Collins. On the community project front, again, Carroll College is a moot point at this point, because they have withdrawn. We had support from both Shertliff, Commissioner Shertliff and Commissioner Reed for the R. Deemer's Project. Commissioner Dean and Commissioner Collins, or excuse me, Mayor Collins, provided support for the Family Promise Client Services Building and Emergency Shelter. Commissioners Dean, Shertliff, and Mayor Collins all provided support for the Last Chance Powwow. The Good Samaritan Warming Shelter and Adult Day Program included support from Commissioners Dean, Shertliff, Reed, and Mayor Collins. The Helena Regional Sports Association Sustainability Study had support from Commissioners, Commissioner Shertliff and Mayor Collins. And I believe now we'll add Commissioner Logan to the group of Commissioners that are interested in discussing the downtown public restroom, which also includes Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Shertliff. I think that that's...
Yes, Commissioner Logan.
If you wouldn't mind adding me to the Family Promise?
Family Promise.
And then if you could also add me on the public restroom. One thing that I would like to think about, and maybe this is for our next meeting, if public defecation is not in the definition of blight, then I don't know what is. It's precisely why we have a TIF district, to address blight. So if we could look at leveraging TIF funds, whether that be, you know, if the city is going to contribute X amount, if this is a, if after our vetting, we can say, yep, we have someone that can maintain it, that will pay to maintain it, we can cover the startup costs. I think it's a good use of TIF funds. I think we have a little over half a million in the downtown TIF fund at the moment. So part coming from ARPA and to be the 50% match for the TIF. Obviously, that has to go through the TIF board, but if this proposal's coming from the BID, many of whom interact very closely with the TIF board, that might give us an opportunity to further vet and work out some of those pieces. And I'm just looking at Director Dendi, are you comfortable with something like that? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Ms. Opitz, I am happy to be added to the K's Kids conversation.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Commissioner Reed. If I may offer a suggestion, then, for our next step, I can consolidate this list, and where there is common interest amongst at least three, so our quorum amount of Commissioners interested in a project, we can bring those forward for additional conversation at a later meeting. Unless there are additional questions, that's all I have from a presentation standpoint. But if there's other information that would be helpful in a subsequent meeting that we could bring forward, I'm happy to put that together.
Great. Yep. Before we go to public comment, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Ms. Opitz. The comprehensive recreation plan, I don't feel like I know very much about it. I'm hesitant to use ARPA funds for consultant costs and for plans. That's my, I would prefer to use these funds for projects versus consultant funds. However, I am 1,000% behind moving forward towards a regional park district, recreation district. So I'd like to know what our options are for finding funding for studies. I'm interested in the concept. I'm not sure I'm there yet on ARPA, but it's something I'd like to know more about. And what, you know, what does $150,000 get us? How far down the road? What are we looking at? What are we not looking at? Because recreation districts are definitely of interest to me. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the Commission? If not, we are going to go ahead and move to public comment. We'll start in here in the room. So please go ahead and come up to the microphone.
Let me get my materials together, a copy of the Helena IR. I actually was at the Real Food Store, saw the newspaper.
Sir, could you introduce your public record?
Oh, yeah. Nathan Costed. I live on Sixth Street. And I realized there was a meeting at 4:00, and I was reading the paper and read Nolan Lister's great article about where you all were thinking about ARPA funding, what you've done. And then I saw this piece that kind of scared me about gross domestic product, seasonally adjusted annual rate. We've seen our third quarter of negative growth in the gross domestic product. What does that mean for Helena, Montana? Who knows? But I can say that, you know, what is ARPA? The American Rescue Plan Act. The funds are meant to help communities recover from the pandemic, to quote Nolan Lister's article and Andy Shertliff. What does that mean? It means we saw an unprecedented time in American history, in the modern history. And how do we, as a city, address that with these limited funds? I appreciate all the thoughtfulness. I was here at the original meeting in December, I think, when you started having these discussions about it. And I think not only has everything changed, but a lot of things have gotten worse in America and in Helena. I think, I just want to applaud Mayor Collins' work in his first term on fighting the scourge of homelessness for veterans and children in this community, but that was blown up by the pandemic. We've all seen the growth of people on the streets, panhandling. And it's really, you know, it's one of those things in your daily life, makes you think about a lot of different things. Do you care about those people? Do you not? That's up to you as elected officials. And I think a budget does reflect your priorities. And I think there's a lot of these projects that it looks like they might be budgetary things as opposed to an item for a rescue plan. Another very concerning thing that's affecting me personally, not myself, but someone in my family, on May 11th, President Biden officially ended the public health emergency for COVID. This will end Medicaid coverage for 10 million Americans. Just more costs coming down the pike after COVID that we no longer have access to, and we see the issues out in our community from COVID. I have friends who are lawyers who are picking up a lot of work defending renters, as the evictions are ramping up rapidly from landlords. Wages are not growing. And we see the result of this. There are, you know, stages and levels of how people are affected, but more people are under pressure. There are hard things going on out there, and how do we resolve them, or how can, you know, the $9 million you got from the American Rescue Plan help? I do grow concerned with discussions for this ARPA money as a citizen and voter, that we are going to be sending money to consultants. I see 150 for a recreation plan, 15 here. I thought I saw 64 recommendation for a study for, I can't remember what that is for. I didn't take good enough notes, but the homeowners' solar loan program, I love the concept, but the reality of, you have to own a home. And if you already own a home, how much help do you need from the city of Helena in this very particular instance? I appreciate that the city is committed to solar itself. That sounds like the kind of program where they can actually meet the goals they've set, in the very ephemeral, ethereal, whatever word, about committing to being a renewable city by 2030, which we all know is just not going to happen. It's just a joke. But I appreciate the effort. And anything that gets us closer to that, as somebody, I think it was Commissioner Reed, said something about a cooling shelter. And I want to talk about cooling and warming shelters. You know, we just had a wonderful week of smoke. I look forward to a future where I pretty much would have to be talked into having children with the future of climate change. And I can't imagine having to live out on a street with it. But I wouldn't want to bring a child into this world where they have to deal with it, and for these homeless people to have to deal with 98 degrees for three, four weeks on end in Montana, when I remember 100, once, under the age of 20, in Montana. So when I see a juxtaposition between a study for an ice skating rink warming shelter, or a warming shelter for those at risk of dying from freezing, and those who may die from heat exhaustion, those are the kind of priorities I hope you guys can manage in your budget. I think there's a lot of opportunity in your budget to do a lot of good things, too, but that's not what I see, is this ability for ARPA to do some direct good in the community. So I thank you for the ability to comment and for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, for the record, my name is Chuck Ball. I represent the K. McKenna Youth Foundation Board. We are the actual funding device that pays for the K's Kids program. So I'm just here to ask you to, as you can, as I've seen, a lot of you are in support of it, and that's what I'm here to make sure that that happens. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We pretty much provide the funding for everybody, with the exception of Kate Peridin's partial of her salary. The rest of it is what we do, and we're the actual ones that are applying for the $50,000. It's not necessarily the K's Kids, it's the foundation who funds it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
For the record, I'm John Krieger. I live on Stewart Street, and I've been trying to support an effort to improve the Memorial Park skating Park skating facility. I think that it's a, one of the most valuable pieces of ground that we have in terms of its possibility of attracting a lot of kids and, you know, low-income kids. It's right in the middle of town. And I, you know, I've played hockey for years. I've been skating at that skating center for, you know, probably 25 to 30 years. And people go out there when the ice is terrible, absolutely terrible, and they put on their skates, and they skate, and they play hockey, and they have fun. And I can't imagine how many people we could attract if we were to really dress it up. And what I'm talking about is a pavilion and a slab of concrete about 150 feet wide and 250 feet long and an Olympic-sized hockey rink. Now, an Olympic-sized hockey rink isn't just for hockey. I mean, there's a wide variety of different things you can do in a hockey rink. You can, the other thing to do would be to cover it with what's called sport court in the summertime. And sport court supports roller hockey and ball hockey, which is played in your tennis shoes, and what they call box lacrosse, which is a form of lacrosse that is designed to be played in an Olympic-sized hockey rink, as is something called futsal, F-U-T-S-A-L, which is a popular five-person soccer game. And it's the only FIFA-approved indoor soccer. And the, our state soccer association knows about this and approves it. Dancing, you know, sport court is an ideal surface for dancing, you know, having large dances, other types of, you know, community, you know, community events. And so, you know, I used to coach hockey, and we went up to Calgary. And on the way to Calgary, we'd stop at this little town and play hockey. And it was like 1,200 people lived in this town, and they had a, they had a rink with two sheets of refrigerated ice plus a duck pen bowling alley. And on the weekends, it was packed, absolutely packed with people from 6:00 in the morning till midnight. And so, you know, if you look at, if you look at Bismarck, North Dakota, they have seven refrigerated sheets of ice indoors. And their outdoor, in the outdoors, they have eight rinks, and all but two of them have a hockey rink and a, what they call a pleasure skating rink, plus a warming house. Now, Bismarck is twice as big as Helena, but, you know, they have 10 times or more the capacity to, you know, get people involved with skating. And it's just one of these places you like you find in Eastern Europe and, you know, the, the north countries in Europe where, you know, hockey rinks are used year-round, and they're just packed full of people, and all kinds of events go on in these places. So I think, you know, having a rink like that now. I've done research over the years. I've been advocating for this for 25 years. And I have some, I think I could, you know, come up with some ballpark figures of the different, you know, parts of this project. You know, you have the slab, and you'd probably want to put refrigeration.
Wrap up your comments in a minute. If you could wrap up your comments in just a couple minutes. We try to keep comments to about two minutes, but if you could want to finish your, a few of your thoughts, and then we'll move on to the rest of public comment.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I have something that, you know, I could hand out to everyone.
If you would like to provide it to the clerks, you can get us all copies.
Okay. Okay. Great. Great. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, sir. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Go ahead.
Mayor Protam, Commissioners, I'm Paul Landis. I'm here with the Helena Regional Sports Association. And I want to address the issue of the need for our sustainability study, but I want to just touch on two points very quickly. In our application for this process, we submitted a list of reasons why what we're trying to do and what we want to accomplish meets the needs of ARPA and why the funds would comply with what their requirements are. One of the, I'll point out one thing, and I want to add to it. We showed in there, there was a study done by HRSA, the Helena Regional Sports Association, that showed a project of this nature would generate 12,230 annual visitors who would spend roughly $1,003,000 per year. Significant number. Two weeks ago, just under two weeks, we received, we finished our conceptual plan for the project and a cost estimate, what it costs. The plan includes an indoor aquatic center, an indoor court center, and an indoor turf center. We've added an additional component recently since we submitted this with an indoor arena. And the arena is designed to hold special events such as concerts. It can be converted to hardwood courts to hold, which would meet the needs of those who want to hold state or regional tournaments for basketball, volleyball, wrestling, anything of that nature. So we will be updating the feasibility study as we move forward on this. These numbers I just mentioned, the $1,003,000 to the community and 12,000 visitors, are much, much larger with the addition of the arena. The other thing I'd like to touch on briefly initially is in August of this past year, myself, two other people, Heather Graham and Elizabeth Kraus, we got together and talked about whether or not the three of us would make a good team to move forward as a leadership on this, the Helena Regional Sports Association. We have a skill set, three different skill sets. We have the desire. For two months, we spent a lot of time doing our own due diligence to decide if we wanted to move forward. We looked at the community needs. That doesn't take long. I think everybody in this room knows what the needs are for sports facilities in the community. The bigger issue was, are we going to have the ability to complete this? It's one thing to say you're going to do it, it's another to complete it. We came to the conclusion, the three of us, that yeah, we want to do it. We wanted to devote our time and energy, and we have. One of the common comments that we heard during our due diligence, and we paid attention to it, was that in the past, the city of Helena hasn't really shown the commitment for a long-term vision for projects of this type. And we didn't know if that was true or not, but speaking personally, my background as a real estate developer, I've been involved in projects like this where a private entity gets involved with a public entity, and how do you bring it to fruition? There are three elements, and they're all simple elements, and I think that they're all things that can be accomplished. The first one, the project needs to serve a community interest given. I don't need to get into that. Private entity needs to assemble a skilled professional team. We've done exactly that. We brought in design and development and contracting professionals that share the same commitment to this project and the passion that we do. We're within days, probably weeks away, from bringing in a professional organization as a fundraiser that also assists us with community outreach. So we've got the team. The third is an open and transparent relationship with the private entity and the public entity. So I've been to every ARPA administrative meeting since this process started, except for one. I missed one. That's my fault. And so I've had a chance to watch everyone here and see how it's gone through. I've had discussions with staff. I know who our team is. Our team works really well together. I don't see that as an obstacle, whether or not there's been issues in the past. Right now, I look at this as an opportunity to bring something forward to Helena, and we're really committed to doing that. I was personally, that meeting several weeks or several months ago, when there's $4 million worth of asks and $2 million worth of money, and I'm going, how are they going to figure this one out? And you gave, and you came to the decision, let's fund the three projects we agree on, and we'll address the others later. There's already equipment moving at Our Redeemers. That was a good decision, and it was a good way to solve a lot of problems. So here we are. So why do we need the study? There's two reasons. The first one being, nobody wants to see a facility of this type built and then run, have to shutter any doors or close any programs. You're dealing with this in some capacity right now at the memorial pool. You're seeing a problem where there's a huge need, but financially, it's a burden. So we know, and I think everybody in this room knows, that the needs there to fill every court, every turf, will be, the pool, all that stuff will be filled. The addition of the arena is going to bring in a lot of extra revenue, a lot of revenue. But we still need to go further. So we've looked outside the box, and we're trying to identify programs that are underserved. There's a need out there. What we found was in Lewis and Clark County, in their data, they show 10% of the population is physically challenged. That's a big number. If you add to that the population that is, that is either behavioral and/or emotionally challenged, the number's even bigger. So how do we meet that needs with a sports complex, entertainment complex? We've addressed this by talking to local groups, to state groups and national groups that deal in this every day. They know how to create programs. They have created programs. They know how to design facilities. They know the certain things you need to add to make it more accessible to certain populations. And we look at that as a big portion of what our project's going to be. One kind of out-of-the-box answer is equestrian therapy, equine therapy. The VA is on the cutting edge. They're really the leading group in the entire country on this. They have a big facility here where they do it. They need indoor facilities. We're going to design that, and we're going to do it. So that's, that's number one.
You could start wrapping up soon.
Number two, and then I'm done. Number two, the donors and the public entities have to have the assurance that they're going to be donating and participating in a project that's going to have long-term viability. That's the whole purpose of our study, and we'll be able to provide a lot of information to the company that does it. So conclusion, two things. If you choose to grant what we're asking, I think what the city is doing is making a big statement that they support a project of this nature, and they recognize the needs. And that will echo within the community. Whether you choose to grant this request or not, we would like to come back to the commission at a later date, sooner than later, and give a full presentation in terms of what it is we're presenting. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protam, Commissioners, I'm Donna Church with Family Promise. I thank you for your support, Commissioner Dean, and it sounds like you work with us at your church. And Family Promise has the opportunity to help families with children. We help non-traditional family units. It could be a grandmother with a child. It could be an aunt with a child. It could be an uncle with a child. We're the only entity in Helena that works with children, male and female, that helps make a difference in their lives. We've had children that have grown up, that we've seen as young adults, that they have told us how our program allowed, one particular gentleman, he said his dad, it allowed him the space to not have to worry about his car payment, to not have to worry about housing, to be able to put himself together, to wrap himself in community and love with the churches and all the people that help support Family Promise. That he was then able to go to college and make a difference in the world. So that's what we're asking your support for within Family Promise. We have identified a location. We've worked with them. We're negotiating with them. We've made an offer, and we're waiting to hear back. We are diligently working on that. I feel like we're this close. We just, it's not final, so we're not at liberty to say. But we do appreciate your support in thinking about those children as you see the children on the street. And we've read recently how the schools, there's so many homeless, and stories I can share with you from when I've been a volunteer with a lady in a fellow church, she had her teenage children with us, and they were saying, I didn't realize he was homeless. And you wouldn't believe the amount of children living in their cars, the children that don't have those things that we have had in our lives, where we can go to bed comfortably at night, waking up reassured that we're going to have food in our belly, that our parents are stable, and that we have, can be able to focus on school and our, you know, normal lives, playing basketball, being able to use the recreational facilities. So please, we ask for your support, and thank you much.
Thank you, ma'am. And really briefly, I think since Commissioner Reed wasn't able to be here for the public comment, it might be helpful if Family Promise could send a follow-up email about where you are in the process. I understand that you can't divulge who the prospective seller is, but I think that might be helpful to answer Commissioner Reed's question before our next meeting. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Next public comment. You're good.
Mayor Protam, Commissioners, I want to thank you all for considering our request to work in the community with our warming shelter and Adult Day program. Just very, very quickly, like many projects Good Samaritan starts, we start as grassroots projects. This project is no different. It started out with a grant for people who are already in recovery, working on their sobriety. However, we grew to bring more and more people into our program who are not at that point yet, and they're starting. We've helped people get to treatment. We've helped them get back to treatment. We've helped them with housing through other programs. We worked with HPD for cases where maybe they don't need to go to the jails, but maybe our staff as peer supports can go out and help them in the community. Those that don't want to go to treatment, they're still coming. I know three right now that are not going to treatment, but they're coming in every day and saying, today I heard one man say, I am 13 days clean. I attribute that to the program at Good Samaritan, the staff that are peer supports, and their to be passionate to the people that come in. So that's that. The other thing I wanted to mention really quick is, Mayor Protam, you were right on about the defecation in those bathrooms. It is so needed. Unfortunately, fortunately, my husband had moved to land a lot with his job, and every small town that we've been in, it's either a walking mall, it's a plaza, it's a city center. There is a restroom for people to use. I think this would be greatly needed and supported by, not only do we work with the people that are homeless and have the needs in the community, but the people that come to see Helena, it's a beautiful community. I love it, but we've got to have something for people here. So I really hope this is taken into consideration. There might be a project Good Sam can work on, too, with the folks we serve, with keeping that up, so. But thank you all very much.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Ortega.
Mayor Protam, Commissioners, manager, and staff. I'm here, Jerry Hoover is my name. I live on the west side of Helena, and I'm a member of Our Redeemer's Lutheran Church. And I'm here tonight just to say, give you a personal thank you for your commitment to us of the $1.58 million. It's a very generous commitment. To give you an update, we are still looking for other sources of funding. We do have a request before Lewis and Clark County for funding from their funds. But so far, we haven't had any further resources that we've been able to procure. But I would like to also say to you that we so like to make a thank you to the United Way and their, and their offer to redirect any funding you might have been considering for them to be applied to the affordable housing project at Our Redeemers. And also, we'd like to say thank you to Carroll College for their social And also, we'd like to say thank you to Carroll College for their social conscience and their withdrawal from it and allowing maybe funds that may have been allocated to them to these other, these other applicants. So with that, on behalf of Rocky Mountain Development Center, the Habitat for Humanity in Helena, and for the YWCA, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment in the room? Okay, we'll go ahead and go online. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, I do have two hands raised online. Our first being Mr. Mark Judeman.
Mr. Judeman.
Hello, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Hope you can hear me.
Mr. Judeman, we can't hear you in the room yet, but it might be us because I see the microphone moving.
Yeah, can you hear me now? Hello? Can you hear me?
We can. Maybe speak up just a little bit louder.
Okay. Hello, I'm, I'm Mark Judeman. I live in Helena. Can you hear me now?
Can, thank you, Mr. Judeman.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all the due diligence that you are performing with this consideration of funding through these federal funds. Clearly, all of the projects that have been suggested have great need and value, and I certainly appreciate, appreciate the impact that they could provide to our community. But I am here to speak in favor of the suggestion by Commissioner Logan and others to do some major solar projects on the city property. What that might do is offer an actual return to the taxpayer on that investment. And I'd also like to mention that under the Inflation Reduction Act, the city would be eligible for at least a 30% direct pay for their share of expenses, so there'd be even more money coming back into the city. And that actually could be possibly more, depending on the domestic content of the projects, whether or not we're in an energy community, and so on. As a previous speaker had noted, there is a 100% clean electricity by 2030 goal that the Commission has established by resolution, 50% by 2025, and we are nowhere near getting to that goal. This would be certainly a step in the right direction, and also, I appreciate Commissioner Dean's suggestion that there be additional funds allocated for the funding, the, the 0% loan program, revolving loan program. Thank you. I hope you could hear most of that.
We did hear all of your testimony, Mr. Judeman. Thanks so much. Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, next I have Renee Bauer. Ms. Bauer.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to visit with you. I want to tell you a little bit about the progress on our proposal, and just a general update of Family Promise. So we all know that Family Promise has a day-center shelter in the community, and just within the last month, we paid off the mortgage on that, so we now own that property free and clear. That property is one that we can expand on, but we also have submitted a bid to another property that is substantially larger than the property that we own. That bid is currently in the back and forth of things that happen when you're trying to, to buy property. But one of the questions that the Commissioners have had is, the, the plan that we submitted doesn't seem to have finite details. Well, we couldn't disclose finite details because we were in the negotiations of buying another property to expand our ability to shelter homeless families. So just wanted to quickly let you know, our program is expanding leaps and bounds in the numbers that we're serving, and we certainly feel like we're a valuable community member. And I will, as requested, send an email with more details as I'm able to disclose them to the council.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, I do have one more. Sean Morrison.
Mr. Morrison.
Hello, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem, excuse me. Thank you for letting me speak. I, I have to say, my name is Sean Morrison, I live in Helena, I grew up primarily outside of East Helena, but have been in this community for a long time, and I'm not, I'm not enviable of the choices you have to make. I think one of the blessings of ARPA funding it is, has gotten us as a community to come together with a lot of very wonderful ideas about improving our community, and certainly some of these ideas are high, high need. I just generally want to make two quick comments about the things that I see as, as worthy of your time and effort. Now first, obviously, I think we recognize the need for housing and, and shelter for those who are in the unhoused community. I also want to say that I think that the Parks and Recreation Plan, the master plan, is an excellent idea, and I do think, maybe contrary to some of the prior testimony today, that it addresses a need that, that our community has in times of crisis. You know, collective sports, collective activities, individual sports, individual activities, even just the opportunity to be outside was a way I think many of us survived through the last crisis, pandemic. It will be something we will need in our future crises, and it is good for the health and well-being of our community at every level. It's certainly something that's utilized by a lot of our, the children in our community who are living in transitionary or temporary housing. So I, I want to weigh my support behind that. I do know the city maybe has, in the past, paid for plans that have sat on shelves, but I have a lot of confidence in Director Smith to believe that if we got a plan, a master plan like the one you were talking about, he would not let that sit and get dusty on a shelf, that we would see these sort of things come, come to fruition. So thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for all your hard work. Again, it's not an enviable position you're in, and I'm confident we'll come to good decisions about how to use this money.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Is there any additional public comment, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, I have no further hands raised and no public comment online.
Okay, great, thank you. Any final comments or questions from the Commission on this item? Okay. So we are, I think, next steps, in the packet, we had listed potentially June 7th was in the PowerPoint, however, there could be potential that there are some Commissioners with conflicting schedules. So if it's all right with the rest of the Commission, I think maybe we'll direct the City Manager and City Clerk's office with, I almost said Director Opitz, but you'll get there. You're going to be Director soon, I'm sure, Ms. Opitz, to find, talk, I guess work with the five members of the Commission to find a date that everyone will be there. I think we, we've tried to set a standard of having these ARPA discussions when everyone are making decisions about ARPA, when everyone can be there. I know the mayor will be watching this recording, but when we make our final deliberations to, to decide what is in the resolution, I'd like to make sure all five are there.
Mayor Pro Tem, we, we will do that.
Thanks. Okay, final item is the FY '24 budget wrap-up. Ms. Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. So at a prior administrative meeting, you had asked that I put a, kind of a running list of decisions that have been made, and maybe some outstanding items, and items that were, had no consensus to fund. So I've put together a list here. We started out with a deficit of $74,292. The Commission had consensus on funding the Humane Society at their full 6% increase request, which added $1,319, and the historic preservation request of $40,000 to fully fund the 50% request of their budget. I am going to pause there for a comment from Manager Burton on that funding request.
Well, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, if the Commission approves the increase for historic preservation, I would ask for some leeway before we release those funds. I think we have some structural and operational discussions that we need to have with Lewis and Clark County in terms of how, how they operate with the City of Helena.
Are there comments on that from either of the Commissioners?
Perhaps. So, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. Are, am I understanding you're wanting a decision out of us tonight? Is that accurate?
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, on these items? Well, we're in the process of preparing the preliminary budget right now. These are kind of the final wrap-up items. If we don't get consensus, then we will have to bring them back or make assumptions based upon the preliminary budget in the hearing in this room.
Okay. All right, well, I'll pause for a minute. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And so the next category is that we brought in an earlier discussion tonight, the prioritized capital funding that we listed out for you. Also, there's a dedicated $150,000 in cash reserves for the next season's sidewalk program. There has been no consensus on, at this point, in increasing that funding. On, on hold is the continued ask for general fund savings to fund next year's season that actually falls into fiscal '24, for the swimming pool funding of $80,000. There's an MOU with the BID for trash and collection and flower maintenance of $8,000 that there's been no consensus on so far. I did note in a prior meeting that there's currently $72,000 in cash repayments in the solar fund to fund that program at $72,000 for the next fiscal year, but there's been no consensus on increasing that funding to, to date. And there's also been some discussion on wanting to increase funding for the sidewalk program due to the number of applications that have been submitted for the program. In the final category, there was no, I just wanted to call it out that there was no consensus to fund the, the community aid grants, although we did receive one public comment at the last meeting for your consideration. And so, as Manager Burton has indicated, we're really looking for direction so that we can start preparing the preliminary budget book. We do need time to, to put that together. It's a pretty big effort, and so if we could hopefully finalize funding for at least putting that book together, that, that will come to the Commission on June 12th. And then, final preliminary budget adoption is at the end of June. However, as you know, final budget adoption is not until September, so there could potentially be changes between preliminary to final budget adoption. I think we're just looking for some, some direction so that we can move forward with presenting our, our budget, or the City Manager's budget.
Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. So, so it'll be the three of us providing that consensus, just so I'm clear, tonight?
Yeah, I think we, Mayor Pro Tem, find ourselves in that situation. If you're comfortable doing that, otherwise, I think we'll have to put this off until our next meeting.
Well, Mayor Pro Tem, I guess I would maybe start at the bottom and work up. So relative to the community grants, HACF, Symphony, Mback, Sunrun, Big Sky Pride, as I look at the funding that HACF has, and the City of Helena, have given to the community through CARES over the last couple of years, and coupled with the fact that we're having some difficulty meeting some of those basic commitments above, such as the swimming pool and historic preservation, which has been, you know, a longstanding commitment that we've had with Lewis and Clark County and our community, I would say, I'm not comfortable with the community grants personally, given the level of funding that we've given with CARES money. So I could, I guess what I'm saying is I could live without that. It's, it's tough, these are tough decisions. And I'm supportive of historic preservation, and then it gets a little bit trickier. The, the swimming pool funding, you know, obviously, we've had some discussion about different places we could enhance that funding, and, and clearly seeing the community need. I guess I would say I'm supportive of that number, and supportive of the sidewalk program in addition to the, the, the suggestion, it sounds like we're going to discuss that, or are we? Is the sidewalk program something we will discuss with ARPA money, or the general fund savings? Was that one of those that rose to the top?
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner, we have $150,000 in the budget.
Yes.
If the Commission wants to go beyond that, because of all the applications, et cetera, then that would be on the table for ARPA for an enhancement, as I see it.
So, so I guess probably what I'm saying is I should, I should wrap it up, is I'm comfortable with everything down to $88,000. All the figures above that on down, as an individual Commissioner.
So, Commissioner Shertliff, do you have anything you want to add first?
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you very much. I've got a question for Manager Burton. You mentioned the sidewalk program, the number of applicants. Do we know, I guess, how many applicants we've, applications we've received? Or?
Danielson, yeah.
Director Danielson.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Shertliff, I, I don't know the exact number right now, but the last I heard, it was around 120.
I know that the first day, it was like 98 by 4:00 PM.
Yeah, our, Mayor Pro Tem, our servers were getting overloaded.
Mayor Pro Tem. I do have David Knopki's hand raised online.
Director Knopki.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. Currently, we have 108. Mayor Pro Tem, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Sorry. Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, currently, there are 108 applications that we received so far, and even if you just assume a very small amount of $5,000 per application, that, that puts you up to close to $600,000, but some of those are obviously going to be larger. So, just to give you a quick update.
Thank you, Director Knopki.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. So, you know, the pool has been, you know, it's a, it's a great asset that we have. I'm interested in talking- I'm interested in talking about or finding ways to, you know, get it out of the red and looking at hours and program offerings. I had another note on that too, but it's somewhere in my notes here. But yeah, I I agree with, you know, Commissioner Logan about the community grants. But again, you know, if it, you worry if it's going to make or break, say, the Sun Run for not getting $1,000 from us. But they are all from Pride to Mback to the Symphony. I think Helena Area Community Foundation does a wonderful job. Yeah, I'm I'm, yeah, I'm willing to have this discussion. I've, I wasn't ex, yeah, I'm, I'll leave it at that for right now. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Shertliff. I I would like to, so Director Danielson, the $72,000 for this, we have $72,000 that we could revolve into this from the current fund. Is that accurate?
Mayor Pro Tem, yes, we have $72,000 currently.
Okay, so I I would be of the mind to utilize that this year. I think that that program, we can't meet the, like the sidewalk loan program, we can't meet the demand. And I think the more families and homes that we can get moved to solar, the better. It saves them money. It saves the community energy consumption. And I think it's been a good investment for for everyone who's who's utilized it. So I would I would prefer to use that 72 that's already there to to fund that. I'm supportive of, I wanted to wait until we got to the contingency piece to talk about the additional funding for sidewalks. I really would like to see us expand that funding to meet the need. I don't believe we'll probably be able to meet the whole need right now. But I'm, I'd like to have that conversation when we, after we pass the resolution addressing the ARPA contingency fund, to then see what we can use from that to address some of the additional demand for the sidewalk program. I'm very supportive of it. I just want to make sure that that resolution passes first. I expect it will, but. And then I'd like to hold, I mean, I really would prefer not to take off the community grants piece. I understand that we're trying to finish the preliminary budget, but I do know, I mean, for the, for example, with the with the Sun Run, just when we had the last public comment, the return on investment for that $1,000 is entire solar raise on schools. So I think that's a pretty low dollar investment for a high return for our community. And Symphony obviously brings in tons of economic impact, a really big piece of our community. And Big Sky Pride, we added that two years ago. We, I I made the motion to amend the budget, and that was to help pay for their insurance for the alcohol liability. I don't know if they have other funding sources for that. I think it's an important thing that we're a part of. But I also know we partner with them with HPD and and other entities in other ways during Big Sky Pride. So I'm not sure what, I don't know where the conversation has gone with them lately. But if they don't need the $1,000, fine. I just don't know if that's still an issue in terms of their liquor liability during the weekend.
And Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, we're down to a short list.
Yep.
And we will be able to bring it back, in particularly when all five members are present and get further direction, even if we have to have some of this discussion while we're considering the preliminary budget.
Okay. All right, any final?
Mayor Mayor Pro Tem, just, I guess, hopefully to clarify my comments on the community grants, it's nothing against either, any of those organizations has to do with, you know, the fact that we're we're struggling to make, meet some of our basic commitments. And like I say, a number of them have been significant recipients of of CARES funding.
Yep.
And so just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Do you require any other direction from us? Yes, Director, do you? What else do you want?
Thank you. So I guess I'm asking if we need to bring this back to another administrative meeting, which was beyond June 7th. But I'm, you made the comment that not all of the commission may be present at that meeting. Our next step is to bring the full preliminary budget presentation on, I believe it's June 12th. I, you know, you certainly can make amendments to the budget at that June 12th meeting for the final preliminary adoption later that month. We were just trying to solidify the numbers.
Yep.
So we could put together the book because it 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 assists us that we don't have a lot of time between the June 7th and trying to post that book on June 12th.
I wonder, Commissioner Logan had stepped out. The, I had, I said I was in favor of using the $72,000 that's currently in the revolving fund to fund this year's budget so it wouldn't be an additional funding amount. Would you be comfortable with that? Not to put you on the spot, but I'm thinking if we can get consensus up till there.
No, that's fine. Sure.
Okay, and Commissioner Shertliff, so I think, I mean, and another commissioner can certainly amend after the preliminary budget, but it sounds like there are three of us here tonight. It sounds, we have consensus then up to the $72,000. And then from everything after that, maybe we can come back to revisit once we have that contingency fund resolution passed. And maybe a clearer idea as to where the preliminary budget is.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. So I'm not sure what the attendance looks like on the 7th, but I'm assuming that there will be five or four, and we'll bring this back on the 7th.
Great. Okay. Any final thoughts on this agenda item? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to public comment. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Any online?
Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, I do have one hand raised online from Emily Frazier.
Ms. Frazier.
Hello. Good evening, Pro Tem Commissioner, or Pro Tem Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
We can.
Marvelous. This is Emily Frazier with the Helena Area Community Foundation. Just wanted to briefly say I recognize that you are in a situation where you are making sure that you can meet your commitments. And of course, we do respect that. But I did want to, you know, say something. I don't know how not to. The program that we've been partnering with the city and also with Lewis and Clark County has been, in our eyes, honestly, almost shockingly successful. The way that it's brought the nonprofit community together and the number of applications we've gotten for some truly amazing things have been really incredible. We are scheduled to present, I believe, on June 21st. So it's a little ways down the road, but we have turned in all of our reports and including impact reports from our previous year's granting. I do recognize that we did help disperse a good amount of CARES funding. But to me, this annual MOU that we have is possibly even more valuable than those one-time funds, as much as that was great and it really provided lift to nonprofits who needed it. This this program, really, having that partnership between the community foundation, the city and the county, it's it's creating a a sense of of partnership among the nonprofit community that I I don't think we could have created on our own, even though we are granting, you know, from our own funds every year as well. So I'm very hesitant to lose that. I know that it's an annual MOU and it's certainly not guaranteed funding each year. But I would strongly encourage you to, you know, withhold, you know, taking that off the table if possible until you've at least gotten a chance to review the reports we've sent in. Again, I really think you might be amazed by the, just your levels of applications we've received, the growth over the last year and really the the change that that's making in how we work communally with nonprofits. It's a small amount of dollars each year, but those really do matter to a lot of nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. And I think just to clarify where my position was, I don't, I don't want this off the table. I just think I'd like it held until we have that contingency and then maybe have another conversation about where we're going. Okay, great. All right. Any other public comment on the general fund agenda item? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to general public comment. Is there any public comment on any item not discussed today? Any online?
Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, I have no hands raised and no further public comment online.
Great. Any final thoughts from the commission? Or staff? Okay, great. Really appreciate everyone's hard work today, and we will be, staff will be reaching out regarding when all five will be here for the next decision step. Just for clarity, we did, we have not reached consensus on, I got an email while we were in here, we did not reach consensus on ARPA. Ms. Opitz was just noting how many and which commissioners were supporting which projects. And at the next meeting, we will come to official consensus of what items will be put on the final resolution. Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.